We're diving right in, this is session four. And as I mentioned last week, when it comes to the works of the Holy Spirit in the lives of the elect, there's many different works to look at. We went through a whole list of them and we didn't even hit all of them last week, honestly. We just hit a big list of them. And we can break down, I mentioned this last week too, but we can break down these works into four major categories. The first category is justification, and a bunch of works flow under that. The second category is sanctification, and you see a bunch of the works in the ministry of the Holy Spirit under that. The next category is empowerment, and these aren't on your notes right now, these were on your notes last week. And then we have the area of koinonia, or community, and that's another area in which the Holy Spirit works. And so, within these categories flow the different individual works. And some of those works, like I mentioned last week, they make it into multiple categories, like the idea of conviction. It makes it into multiple categories, so we'll actually mention that more than once. But tonight, we're gonna take a look at just one of these major categories and the works that come within it. And I'm gonna say this too, I can't, I don't have the time to hit on every single work that falls under this category. You can ask Kelsey, last night as I was finishing putting this together, I was like, I just don't feel like I'm doing it justice. I was over there talking to myself, she was getting all mad at me because I kept talking to myself. And I was like, I just don't feel like I'm, kidding, she wasn't mad, but I just, there's so much, there's so much, but there's so little time. So, we're gonna, we're gonna get through as much as we can, but we're not gonna hit every work that happens under this certain category. And I think that it'd be appropriate, as we look at the categories, to start with the beginning of the works that the Holy Spirit does in the lives of the elect. So, we're gonna look at the works of the Holy Spirit in the area of justification tonight. That's what we're gonna look at. You know, though mankind was created in the image of God, and perfectly suited for fellowship with Him. You gotta realize that, in the beginning, God created man, He saw that it was, that that was good. Man had fellowship with God, but as a result of Adam and Eve's sin, what happened? The entire human race is now born into sin and alienated from God, and subject to God's judgment. And so, as an overflow of God's grace, the triune God, He purposed to save a remnant of His creation through the atoning work of God, the Son. And Scripture teaches that the saving benefits purchased by Christ's cross, they're applied to believers through the work of the Holy Spirit, that's what Scripture teaches. And so, this is the area that we're talking about tonight, the area of justification. Or you might be more familiar with the term salvation, right? We talk about our salvation, the reason I'm using the term justification is, it's really just a preference right now, to be honest with you, but it also speaks about what is happening here. When we talk about salvation, you know, we, I feel like today in our society, we have a cheapened view of salvation because everybody proclaims, "Oh, my salvation is here," right? If Walmart opens up at past 11 o'clock now, "Oh, my salvation is here." Everybody just wants to proclaim that, but the idea of justification, it really means something. Salvation means something, it's just been cheapened by our culture. But when we talk about justification, we are made right in the eyes of God because of the work of Christ, right? And in this, and how we're gonna dive into this and look at, because of how the Holy Spirit has worked that out in us. And so, so you know, so when I, if I say salvation or justification tonight, I'm talking about the same area. But the first step, and this is number one on your notes here, the first step in the Spirit's application of salvation is regeneration. Lots of shuns in that. The first step of the Spirit's application of salvation is regeneration, okay? Fundamental to understanding regeneration are the realities of spiritual death in life. We have to understand that to understand the idea and the fundamentals of regeneration. And that, here's the idea, every human being who has ever lived has suffered from spiritual deadness. Every human being. You can see that in Romans 3:23, what's, what, does anybody know that verse right off the top of your head? Romans 3:23. Yeah. So, and then Ephesians 2 verses 1 and verse 5, but Ephesians 2 verse 1, how's that start? "For you were dead in your trespasses and sins," right? And so, the idea here is that every human is, has suffered from spiritual deadness. So, that's the idea of spiritual death, but God the Father, and the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, give new spiritual life to those who were previously dead in their sins. And you see that in Romans 8, verse 2, 6, and 10 and 11. Regeneration directly addresses these gracious acts, or this gracious act of God. That's, that's this idea of regeneration, the idea that we were born in spiritual deadness, if that makes sense, and God made us alive, and made us a new spiritual life. That's this idea of regeneration. But wait, there's more. Regeneration is a work in of itself, okay? But there are works in the ministry of the Holy Spirit that fall under the work of regeneration. And Scripture actually pictures regeneration using four different images. That's, that's number two on your notes, four different images. The first one being spiritual birth. I'm gonna read to you Titus 3, verse 5, and Titus 3:5 is actually gonna come up for a couple of these over and over again. But it says this, "He saved us not because of works done by us in righteousness, but according to His own mercy, by the washing of regeneration and the renewal of the Holy Spirit." The Greek word that we see for regeneration literally means born again. That's, that's, that's what the word means. And when speaking to Nicodemus, what did Jesus say? He said, "You must be born again." And he said, "You must be born from above," right? And there's, there's actually two Greek words that, that bring this idea of born again and born from above to light, but they refer to spiritual rebirth by God. Born from above is, it's, it's from God who dwells above. John's first epistle actually repeatedly refers to being born of God. It's the same concept there, being born from above, born of God. And so, in the act of regeneration, the Holy Spirit has brought about conviction of sin and righteousness and judgment, all of those things. That's another one of your notes, that's the dash there. He's brought conviction. We mentioned that conviction's one that falls under multiple categories. And here, in the very beginning of your new life in Christ, the Holy Spirit's working to bring about conviction of sin, not just, not just the individual sin in your life, but the reality of sin. The reality of sin's existence and the implications of it, because God is righteous, God has a righteous standard. And because of that, God has a judgment to give out to those who are not righteous, as He says, "Be holy as I am holy." And everybody's failed at that miserably. And so, the Holy Spirit works to bring about this conviction about those things in our life, and about the reality of those things existing, period. And so, John 16, verses 8 through 11 says this, "And when He comes, He will convict the world concerning sin and righteousness and judgment." Y'all know where I got the answer for that now, y'all know where, so it says that, "Concerning sin, because they do not believe in Me; concerning righteousness, because I go to the Father, and you will see Me no longer; concerning judgment, because the ruler of this world is judged." But also, so, so the Holy Spirit brings about conviction, but also He provides assurance of salvation afterward by bearing witness to the believer of its reality. And this is, this is something we gotta grab and take a hold of too, because on one hand, you know, we're gonna talk about how conviction continues along with us as we walk this Christian life. And conviction happened in the beginning for us to understand the reality of our sin and our separation and our alienation from God. But while the Holy Spirit does that, He also provides assurance of that salvation by bearing witness to the believer of its reality. You can see that in Romans 8:16, 1 John 3:24. And so, I wanted to put that in, this, that's, that's another one that kinda works throughout that process of sanctification. But, but I wanted to put that in because it has to do with salvation, and that's what we're talking about right now. We're talking about being justified in the eyes of the Father, in the name of the Son. And so, we, we should understand how the Holy Spirit works in both of those areas. Another thing that the Holy Spirit does in the realm of salvation, or I mean regeneration, is spiritual cleansing. This is B on your notes, spiritual cleansing. Paul twice uses the word, the Greek word lutron to refer to those who are filthy with sin, being washed clean by the act of regeneration. Okay, so Paul, Paul refers to this Greek word, and that's the idea, is that you are filthy with sin, but you've been washed clean by regeneration. I want you, do you have your Bible, if you have your Bible, turn to 1 Corinthians, chapter 6. I meant to tell you that before we started, and I forgot. 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, we're gonna look at verses 9 and 10 to start off with. But I just, I want you to look at the words of Paul here to the Corinthian church. This is where we're gonna see this, this whole thing kinda come into play and played out. And this isn't, this is not an unfamiliar verse to us. Starting in verse 9, "Or do you not know that the unrighteous will inherit, will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither the sexually immoral, nor adulterers, nor adulterers, nor men who practice homosexuality, nor thieves, nor the greedy, nor drunkards, nor revilers, nor swindlers, will inherit the kingdom of God." So, Paul's speaking here to the Corinthian church, and after he recounts many of the sins of their ways, he's not just making things up like, like, "Oh, here's a happenstance I'm gonna talk about." No, these are things that they have dealt with in their culture as that, those people. And so, these are things that they are very familiar with. So, after he recounts these many sins of theirs, he uses another word to describe their being washed, which he associates with the sanctification that comes from salvation and justification. Look at verse 11. "And such were some of you, but you were washed, you were sanctified, you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the Spirit of our God." I want you to think about that verse. So, they sell these t-shirts, and I was trying to figure out what it was last night, I had to ask Kelsey, and I had to look it up on the Google machine. Have you ever seen the t-shirt that, that says, "I love Jesus, but I cuss a little?" Yeah, this is why it's not a good idea to buy that shirt. It flies just completely against the grain of the work that the Spirit did in your life that enabled you to love Jesus. Do you realize that? To, to, to wear that shirt, "I love Jesus, but I cuss a little," is just to be like a smack in the face to God, if we were even capable of doing that. Because the work that the Holy Spirit did in your life enabled you to love Jesus, and along with that work, you were washed. You were made new, "As such were some of you." Lutron is the word, "You were filthy in sin, but you've been made washed, you've been washed clean and made new in Christ." And so, don't buy that shirt, or that coffee mug, or whatever. And that, you know, that just, there's so many other instances where that, that applies, right? And yes, we are people of God's great grace and God's great mercy on us, and we make mistakes, we still sin, we are imperfect people. Show me a perfect person in the church, and I'll show you a liar, right? But we should not excuse ourselves by the grace of God. What's, what's Paul say, what, what then, should we go on sinning that grace may abound? Of course not, by no means. No, we've been, "As such were some of us." But Jesus did a work on the cross, and the Holy Spirit did a work in our lives, as they were sent by the Father who now approves of us. All right, moving on, another work that, that falls under the category of regeneration is spiritual creation. Spiritual creation. Paul, Paul uses another Greek word, which literally means new again. So, you got the, you got the born again, born from above, and then you have this other word that's new again. Or, or it's translated a lot of times renewal, you'll see it as the renewal of the Holy Spirit. Because of regeneration, in the sense of spiritual renewal, is what that's talking about there. So, I'm gonna flow right into these other two points here, Christians have a new nature. Do I have that on your notes? Okay, Christians have a new nature with new spiritual capacities. A whole new nature with a whole new spiritual capacity that, that wasn't there before. It's new. The regenerated, the renewed believer has been graced with a condition really even better than what Adam originally had before his fall into sin, and before he experienced God's curse. The Christian has actually a, we've been graced with, with a better condition in that sense. Adam was innocent, right? But the regenerated believer is declared as righteous. Adam was innocent, where declared as righteous? Adam's innocence was taken away, wasn't it? What we have in Christ cannot be taken away. We are now the Holy Spirit's spiritual recreation, and we are alive to God. So much better. And one day, we'll meet glorification, which is gonna be even better, better, because we won't have to deal with these bodies that are falling apart on us. I tried to do, fun fact, okay, I told myself like months ago that I was gonna work out when I was doing this diet, and I was gonna get real buff and stuff, and I didn't, and I lost a lot of muscle mass too. And so, today, I decided, I'm gonna, I'm, I had some, I had a little bit of spare time, I was like, I got some weights in my office, and so, I started doing those, I was like, I can do a couple sit-ups. And I did like 20, 20 or 25 sit-ups, and I felt like my body was gonna explode, okay? I sent Kelsey a text, I said, "Explode with muscles," but I was hurting after that. And so, our bodies are falling apart, our bodies are falling apart. One day, we'll be in a better body, a perfect body. Anyway, that was a long way to speak about that. Just, just, I'm just saying, just, one day, if, if I'm in the pulpit in my, my suit jacket busts open. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's probably because I ate pecan pie, honestly. The next one, D on your notes is, falling under the category of this, is spiritual resurrection. Spiritual resurrection. That was one last week that we mentioned, he resurrects. And this, John 6, verse 63 says, "It is the Spirit who gives life." It's the Spirit who gives life. "The flesh is no help at all, the words I have spoken to you are spirit in life." Spiritual resurrection. Both Paul and John declare that the Spirit gives life. And elsewhere, Scripture states that God gives life, God in a broad sense, God the Father. John reveals that Christ gives life. And so, I say those, those other two persons of the Trinity, because obviously, there's a coordinated trinitarian effort that, that's involved in bringing spiritual life to those who were formerly spiritually dead. That's, it's not, it's not an act done alone. You remember before, in this study, I said that they work together, they work in harmony, that the three persons of the Trinity? They all have their individual roles that they're working out, but they work together. This is another reason too, why Jesus, when He's given the formula for baptism, what does He say? Go therefore and baptize them in the name of the... Yeah, the Father, the Son, and the Spirit, right? And so, because all three persons of the Trinity are at work here, we need to understand that. We don't just give credit only to singularly one person of, of the Godhead. However, the role of the Holy Spirit is what we're looking at as He works this out within us, okay? So, anyway, the idea here is that Scripture portrays regeneration as spiritual resurrection. And along the lines of salvation, one thing that helps us really to have a better perspective is the unique, or of the unique work of the Holy Spirit, and this is number three here, is that salvation comes only by God's will, not by human will. Now, I told you when we got early, maybe the first or second session, that there would be some things depending on your theological background that you may have to wrestle Scripture with, and this is probably one of them. This is one that I had to wrestle Scripture with years, years ago. But, but I wanna read you some Scripture, okay? John 1, verses 12 through 13 says, "But to all who did receive him, who believed in his name, he gave the right to become children of God, who were born not of blood, nor the will of the flesh, nor the will of man, but of God." Ephesians 2, verses 8 through 10. What, what does that say? "For it's by grace you've been saved through faith in that not of yourselves." It's a gift, a gift, why can't I speak tonight? It's a gift of God, "not by works, so that no man can boast." For here, we're, what's verse 10? "For we are his workmanship created in Christ Jesus, for good works which he prepared beforehand, that we should walk in them." Another verse I wanna read you is James 1:18, "Of his own will he brought us forth, by the word of truth, that we should be a kind of first fruits of his creatures." In the passage of Scripture that usually people go to, that really addresses this very, very clearly, along with the one that we talked, we mentioned in John, Romans 9, verses 15 and 16. "For he says to Moses, 'I will have mercy on whom I have mercy, and I will have compassion on whom I have compassion.' So then, it depends not on human will or exertion, but on God who has mercy." While all three members of the Godhead make unique contributions to the effort of regeneration, Scripture heavily emphasizes that it's by the complementary interaction of God's Spirit through God's Word that regeneration takes place. That's why you'll hear me, when I'm talking about going out and sharing the gospel, what do I always say that you must have when sharing the gospel? The Word. Share Scripture. Don't only, like, it's good to give your testimony, that's great, but you need Scripture, because Scripture, God's Word is what the Holy Spirit is working along with in the person's heart to bring them to Christ. And the idea of the parable, we did a whole study of this, the parable of the sower, right? What's the seed? The seed is the Word of God, the Word of God is what must go forth. And so, Scripture's clear about this. Number four here on your notes, this act of efficacious grace brings about a creation of new life. It's an act of grace, and it's, it's an effectual working of, of Jesus on the cross. When He said, "It is finished," He meant it, He was effective in it. It wasn't, "It is finished," maybe, no, it is finished, and it brings about this creation of new life. And it results in the believers being a new creation. There's a song, I'm trying to think of what that song is, and I actually kinda like the song, but I had to change the words in it. What's, the second verse? Yeah, nothing better than you, but the, yeah, but the second verse, I'm not a big fan of him. Anyway, but what's the second verse of that? Help me out, I just had it on top of my head. It says something, something along the lines of... That's the chorus. Yeah, what? No, that, that, yeah, but that's still, that's like the bridge, there's a, the second verse. Oh, right there, that's it. "Then you came along and put me back together," okay? It was actually not Brandon Lake, it's Stephen Furtick. And, well, the reason I say that is because that sounds innocent enough in itself, right? Elevation, yeah, elevation, oh, okay, yeah. Well, Stephen, Stephen, oh, okay, so Brandon Lake's part of it, I'm sorry, forgive me. But, but Stephen Furtick, if you know his theology, he has spoken time and time again and said, "God doesn't make you a new creation when, when He bring, when, when you come to Christ." He just makes you, like, I can't, okay, I'm gonna misquote him here, because I can't remember exactly the words, but it's along the lines of, "God just enhances who you are." So, now, think about that line in the light of that theology. "Then you came along and put me back together. I was just, I was just a mess of a man, and now you put me back together." No, we're a new creation, the old is gone, passed away. It's, 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 this is huge for us to understand. This is big news, this is so much better than being put back together. God has made us something completely new, and, and that is proper theology. That is theology that gives glory to God, instead of saying, "Well, you know, if I can be fixed, maybe I can fix myself." No, we can't fix ourselves, what can a dead person do? Nothing, he must be made alive, he must be born again, he must be made a new creation. Sorry, I got on a soapbox on that one, okay? So, with being a new creation, along with being a new creation comes a new nature, of course. Along with that new nature comes new abilities, along with new abilities comes new desires. Who has a new desire in Christ that you didn't have before Christ? One, one part of my, my testimony is that I used to love classic rock music. I'd, I was asked to be a part of the youth band, and I would help lead worship in the youth band on Wednesday nights, and then on Friday nights, I would go and sing songs from AC/DC, and, you know, Tom Petty, and all that stuff, in the coffee shop on Friday nights. Songs that, "We're not glorifying to God at all," half the time, I probably didn't even know what I was saying. But now, actually, it didn't take long after coming to know Christ, that God changed that desire in my heart to where, I'll be honest with you, if somebody's riding in a car with me and you turn on the radio to classic rock, I'm turning it off, and you might get kicked out of my car. I can't stand it, I can't even stand it anymore. And because God knew what kind of grip it had on me, and He changed my desire so much, so. So, new desires, you even end up with new relationships, and being part of a new creation, we mentioned in verse 10 of Ephesians, chapter 2, "You were created in Christ Jesus for good works which he prepared beforehand, that you should walk in them." So, you have new responsibilities, new responsibilities, and, and all of that is from that point forward and forevermore. It's not just for a temporary time, yeah, I'm a Christian for this season, but, you know, I'm, in two years, I don't think I'm gonna do that. You know, it's from that point forever. The last thing I wanna point out in the area of justification or salvation, whichever way you wanna look at it, is after God's Spirit regenerates those who are dead in their sins, at least six significant spiritual enhancements involving the, the... at least six significant spiritual enhancements involving the, the Spirit happen simultaneously. And so, turn to the backside of your notes. And, and I'm not gonna go into detail with these on this list so much, okay? Because while these are instantaneous effects of the Holy Spirit, uh, of the Holy Spirit's work in salvation, they also flow better under the category of sanctification. So we'll get to those next week. But I felt the need to, to put them under this justification category, because there's so many false views out there that say that there's a certain point in time that this happens in the life of a believer. That it's not at salvation, but you have to get to this point, that that point in time is not during salvation, but you, you would, some, some would even teach that you have to meet a certain spiritual level before you can reach these six different things. And that's just not true. It couldn't be further from the truth to say that. Because it takes the work of the Holy Spirit, uh, away, and it puts it down to your own goodness, it puts it down to your own ability. And one, one, one case of this, and we'll talk about this more, but churches that teach that you can speak in tongues, which we will refute that later in this series, but churches that teach that will say, "Well, if you haven't gotten the gift of tongues yet, you're not at that spiritual level yet." You might be saved, but you're not at that spiritual level yet. No. That's not how it works. That's just not how it works. And so, um, it, it just, it puts it on, okay, well, what's my ability to get there? What's my goodness level to get there? It's not about the Holy Spirit anymore. And so I'm gonna mention these things as they, they, they happen in the life of the believer, in any believer, from the moment that they're born again. These things are credited to them. They're, they're more appropriately worked out in the area of sanctification, but they are gifted and given to us at the moment of regeneration. And so, the first one here is that Christ baptizes the believer with the Spirit into the body of Christ. Baptized with the Spirit into the body of Christ. And this is why, if you, you know, we talk about the church, you get, you, you join the church by baptism or whatever, but spiritually speaking, when you are born again, you are baptized into the church universal. You're baptized into Christ's kingdom, into, into... It's on my back now, it's a bottle of water. You're baptized, and you're, you're in the kingdom of God. So that's the first one. The second one is that the Father seals the believer with the Holy Spirit. And this, the sealing really, it's, it's a, it's a show of ownership, but it's also a guarantee of one's salvation. How many times have you heard other denominations? Or even other, I would even say sects of religion that we couldn't even consider a denomination because their theology's so bad, talk about, "You can lose your salvation." No, the Father seals the believer with the Holy Spirit. It's, we are His. The, the, this, it's, it's like a, it's like a cattle brand, you know? We, we're God's people now. You were once not a people, but now you are a people. Next thing is, "The Spirit indwells the believer." I'm gonna move right to the next one, because these two kinda go hand in hand. Uh, "The Spirit fills slash controls the believer." And you're like, "What, am I a puppet?" Well, no, that's not what that means. Okay, that's, that's not at all what that means. But where, think about it this way, where you once were a slave to sin, and you had no control over the slavery, the bondage of the slavery of sin. Well, now you're a slave to God. And so, you, you know, we, 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 if you look at it in these same kind of terms, that's, that's what this means right here. But, you know, the idea of the Holy Spirit indwelling the believer or filling the believer. Uh, I, I had a pastor in a Southern Baptist church that I served under one time that told me that he believed that the Holy Spirit does not indwell the believer until, once again, it's that, that idea of this certain time period of their spiritual maturity. And I'm like, "Where do you get that?" And, you know, he had, he had an answer that was a passage of Scripture, but the problem is, is he completely took it out of context. I can't remember what the passage of Scripture is, but I do remember going and looking at it and saying, "That has nothing to do with what you're applying it to here." And that's why we gotta be careful. If it's talking about salvation, if it's talking about, uh, the, the idea of regeneration and, and, and Christ being in us, or the Holy Spirit being in us, then we, we look at it in that context. But you can easily take any passage of Scripture out of context to fit whatever narrative you want. And, and that's, that's the danger of, of poor hermeneutics and, and, and poor exegetical interpretation. So, you know, but let's just move on, because that was a Southern Baptist church though, by the way. Okay, um, I think he went on to a non-denominational church after that. Number, are we on number five? "The Spirit produces spiritual fruit in the believer's life." This isn't something that we have to wait for. This is something, now, your, your showing of that fruit might take some time, right? We are, we're gonna talk about the process of sanctification. It's not as easy as it sounds. Was anybody immediately a patient person once they were born again? Was, was everybody immediately the most kind person on earth when you were born again? Peaceful? You have good self-control, you know, gentle? Were you faithful? I mean, that, of, of course, it's a process. However, these are the fruit of the Spirit who dwells within us. And so, it's available. Number six, "The Spirit gifts the believer for service in the church." Oh, can I say that one louder? "The Spirit gifts the believer for service in the church." Can I recall back to the ministry teams for just a second? Adventure Club. Just some areas, uh, that we need. Student ministry, yeah. There's some areas that we need people to realize that the Spirit ain't waiting. He already has gifted you for an area of service. And God's, God calls us. You know, one of the reasons that God calls us to be a part of the church is to work within the church for His glory and the good of those around, that ministry, when ministry happens. So, that's the six, number six. I gotta speed up here. So, so really, to be able to sum all this up to a point, or sum it up to a point, and, and also be able to see how great God's love is for us. The Spirit works in your life to bring you out of slavery of sin into the arms of the loving Father as His child, before you even recognize it. Think, you gotta think about that for a second. That, that's such a magnificent work of the Spirit before, and what, what is, I mean, I keep going back to this conversation with Jesus and Nicodemus, as He refers to the work of the Holy Spirit like the wind. You don't know where it comes from. You don't know where it go, like, by the time it's already affected you, now you're observing it, pretty much. That's the language that He's using here. You can't control it, you can't manipulate it, you don't even know anything about it really, except for the fact that now you're observing its effects on you. And God, in His great love for us, has taken us out of sin and brought us into His kingdom, not as some peasant, but as His child, as a co-heir to the kingdom with Christ. And this, this is the idea behind, "We love." Why? Because He first loved us. That's a true statement. He loved us first and gave us the ability to love. This, this love that God had for us and worked out in us through the Holy Spirit causes us to have an ability to come to Him in faith and repentance. I, I mentioned this before, but Jesus gave visual pictures of this process throughout His ministry on earth. Healing a blind man. He gave a blind man sight. And you remember what, when, when the blind man was questioned about it? And they were like, "Who did this to you? What's going on?" He's like, "I don't know." Like, and they're, they're asking like about Jesus, "Did He do this work on this and that?" And, and even the guy's parents were like, "He's of age, don't ask us, we don't wanna be in trouble for this, you go ask Him." And what does he say? He said, "All I know is that I was blind, and now I can see." He didn't know, he didn't have a deep theology about what happened to him, he just acted accordingly because of what happened to him. And so, this is, this is the idea here, that this, this ability to, to come to Christ in faith and repentance was not there before, because we were dead in our sin. The Holy Spirit had to do a work in us. And so, this is, this is the last one in your notes. This, uh, this is what is called monergism, okay? And monergism is the doctrine that states that the Spirit is the sole agent of regeneration. That's monergism, monergistic. So God works monergistically in our initial salvation through the process of regeneration of the heart. And, and this is what Jesus is talking about. Once again, you must be born first, you must be born again from above. You, you, you can't contribute to your being born again, uh, any more than you could contribute to your first birth. Did anybody contribute to your first birth? Be awkward, yeah. And, but that's the picture. That's the picture there. However, though, I wanna say this. However, once God's opened your eyes to the truth, once God's given you a new heart of flesh and taken out that heart of stone, and, and it caused you to act accordingly in repentance and faith in Christ, now, now, you have a certain responsibility in this new life, and you, you have to walk through the process of looking more like Christ. And, or we could say the process of holiness, in other words, or sanctification, which we're gonna break that down next week and, and that. But, but realize this, as you're working that out, you're still not alone. You're not alone. Whereas God worked monergistically in your regeneration, God and yourself now work synergistically in your sanctification. You're, you're not on your own in the process of being conformed into the image of Christ. You know, some may ask, you know, "Well, who, who's doing the work in me? Is it, is it me, or is it God?" Well, yes. When it's, and most likely, it's you when you realize that, "Oh, I messed up and I've sinned." And it's God when something good happens. Okay? That's the way to look at it. But God's working with you, you're not alone. And, and we're gonna take a look at that next week, uh, at how the Holy Spirit works in that area of our lives, of course. But, but I wanted, I wanted to point that out, because tonight was all about how the Holy Spirit works in the idea, in the process of regeneration of the, of the heart, regen, making you a new person, being born again, new again. Next week, we're gonna look at how the Holy Spirit works in sanctification. And it's gonna be a good one. We might have to make it a two-parter, honestly. But let's go ahead and pray, and then we'll open it up for some questions. Let's pray.